Okay, folks, welcome to our April 9th City Council meeting. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Sterns?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wagner?
Here.
Councilmember Sackler?
Here.
Councilmember Instrom?
Here.
Mayor Mortar?
Here. Well, we were gonna have a treat to have a presentation on the Clean and Safe Volunteer Program that's collected trash for over a year now. And our projector, our newly purchased projector, decided it didn't want to project onto that small screen. So we'll skip this Clean and Safe presentation and move on now to the proclamations, which I have the honor to read. I'll be there in a moment. Esteemed councilmembers, staff, and audience, I have the honor of reading two proclamations tonight. Can you hear me? It's good. The first one is for Earth Day 2018, and the second will be the National Boys and Girls Club Week commemoration. So firstly, Earth Day, whereas humankind is currently facing tremendous global challenges affecting every community, including large-scale migration, extreme inequality and poverty, degradation of ecosystems, mass extinction of species, and global climate change, and all people of this earth, no matter their race, gender, income, sexual orientation, or national origin, have a right to a healthy environment, and the youth of the world are our most valuable resource and represent a source of endless creativity and potential. And whereas it's necessary of the students, of the citizens of our global community to develop green jobs and to build an innovative and equitable green economy to combat the aforementioned global challenges, and whereas expanding environmental education and climate literacy is vital to enhance awareness about the environment, inform decision-making, and protect future generations, and whereas it's understood that sustainability will only be achieved by meeting the needs of the present without compromising the needs of future generations, and it's more important than ever to act locally and to cooperate internationally and defend the environmental progress that has been heretofore gained, and it's essential to expand and diversify the global environmental movement to achieve maximum progress, and Earth Day is an annual reminder of the constant need for environmental activism, stewardship commitments, and sustainability efforts. Now therefore, I, Kathy Mortar, Mayor of the City of Mount Shasta, have the distinct honor of proclaiming April 22nd, 2018, as Earth Day throughout the City of Mount Shasta and encourage all of its citizens, businesses, and institutions to use Earth Day to celebrate the earth and promote environmental and climate literacy. So Sunday, April 22nd, Earth Day. I'll be mentioning a few things about that later, a few minutes later, about celebrations, volunteer activities that are scheduled for this coming weekend and the following weekend. My second proclamation then, this is about "A Place to Become: The National Boys and Girls Club Week." Would you like to come up and join me now or wait until I'm finished? Okay, okay, okay. I'll read it first, it's kind of long. "The town of Mount Shasta hereby proclaims for National Boys and Girls Club Week, whereas the citizens of Mount Shasta stand firmly committed to quality after-school programs through the Boys and Girls Club of the Siskies because they, one, provide challenging, engaging, and fun learning experiences to help youth develop their social, emotional, physical, cultural, and academic skills; two, support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive after school and during the summer; and three, build stronger communities by involving our students, parents, business leaders, and volunteers in the lives of our young people, thereby promoting positive relationships among children, teenagers, families, and adults. And whereas, the Boys and Girls Club of the Siskies serves more than 250 club members and their families, and the Boys and Girls Club of the Siskies provide children in grades 2nd through 8th with life-enhancing programs in academics, athletics, arts, civic involvement, life and leadership skills. And the week of April 9th, that would be today, through the 13th is National Boys and Girls Club Week, during which the Boys and Girls Club of the Siskies will join more than 4 million club members in more than 4,000 clubs nationwide to celebrate, quote, 'a place to become.' Therefore it be resolved that I, Kathy Mortar, Mayor of the City of Mount Shasta, do hereby proclaim April 9th through 13th, 2018, as Boys and Girls Club Week in Mount Shasta, California, and be it further resolved that the City of Mount Shasta enthusiastically endorses and celebrates the Boys and Girls Club of the Siskies, the Mount Shasta Unit, its cause and its children, and encourages all citizens to join in recognizing and commending them for providing the young people of our communities with comprehensive and effective youth development services. Great futures start here." And with that, then I'd like to invite our director, Noam Zimmun, up to say just a few words and perhaps have a couple of students join him.
Yeah, if you guys wanna... So my name is Noam Zimmun, and I'm the Director of the Boys and Girls Club of the Siskies, and I brought some members of the club with me today, just to share a little bit with you all. Part of the Boys and Girls Club National Week, we're having, we're actually celebrating with 4,200 other clubs across the nation through Facebook, so we're all linked in together. So this has been an exciting day for us, and it's been actually an exciting year. We opened our doors last summer and had about 80 kids a day show up, so it's really, and right now we have 65 a day, and so it's really, you know, a good place to be, but that's what I think, but these guys know more. What do you guys think? You wanna share something? This is Avriel.
Hi, my name is Avriel, and...
You have to talk into the mic, Avriel.
Never done this before, so we're just gonna go with this. So anyways, my name is Avriel, and I'm super excited to have this proclamation, and that's really exciting. I love going to Boys and Girls Club. I go there like every day after school, not every day, 'cause like, yeah, but I really like going there, it's like super fun to hang out, 'cause all my friends are here, there, and you can just like have fun, you can get your homework done, and it's like a fun environment to do whatever you need to do. Anyways, thank you and have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bryson, and I am really happy for the proclamation, and I think Boys and Girls Club is fun to go to. It helps me learn different things and improve a lot with me. It's fun to hang out with my friends, and I think it's really good.
Thank you guys for the proclamation, and thank you for, you know, welcoming us. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Noam. And thank you for the incredible hard work that you, Noam, and your staff have put in over the months. I know it's been a commitment beyond, the beyond, what does this say? Beyond, "A Place to Become," you definitely are creating that, and I'd like to just thank the youth of our community and encourage you to keep at it, because you are our future, and your future is starting here, and we'd like to support you, so thanks so much.
Thank you for your great needed service in our community, too. Needed to be filled, and you stepped up, thank you.
Okay, wow, that was a nice inspirational beginning. I'd like to make an announcement about a minor agenda change. In reviewing the agenda, it just seemed to me that it made more sense, given the flow of discussion, to combine the salary survey and the fire department agenda items, rather than to take them separately, and I'll explain this when we get to item number nine, but it seemed to me that to hear from staff about their thoughts on a salary survey during the course of the fire department staffing discussion would provide for a better flow. So hopefully this isn't a surprise to you, I did talk to Bruce about it this morning, we'll go from there. So items nine and 10 will be combined. Okay, it's time now for public comment, for those of you who would like to make a comment about something that's not on our agenda or is just only in the consent agenda, and I have Marcus, is it Christian?
That's correct.
Yes, Marcus, please share your name again.
Hello, Marcus Christian.
You have three minutes.
Is that too loud for you?
No, it's good.
Sorry, I've got a bit of a dicky throat at the moment, councilmembers, city employees. My name is Marcus Christian, I'm here to represent some neighbors on Berry Street where I live, Doug Dordell, Melissa Joyce, Keith Hamrick from Northbound Coffee Roasters, and myself, and I'd like to bring your attention and the city manager to 211 High Street, known locally as the crack house, or the den of iniquity, or the house of ill repute. We initially, it's owned by slum lords Denver and Mandy Piggy in Sacramento, who've avoided my telephone calls about their tenants. The Mount Shasta Police Department are fully aware of the nature of complaints about this house, they have a long call list, excuse my voice. Siskiyou County sheriffs are aware of this house as well, this is my direct neighbor, opposite mine. We have everything from violent brawls with screaming abuse in the street, we've had two incidences of that, I kid thee not, like a Wild West brawl. We've had the woman who lives there, the tenant, banging loudly with the child, screaming on the neighbor's door late at night that the partner was trying to kill her and threatening her. The police attended that, Christopher Stock, deputy, is fully aware of that. We have had a wanted-out-of-state felon arrested by Siskiyou County Sheriff staying there. We have people coming by to drop off or pick up, that's merely an aspersion, I have conjecture there, I have no physical evidence, but I've seen those signs before. We have, Keith Hamrick observed the tenant smoking methamphetamine on the doorstep one morning. We've had Child Protection Agency coming to check and possibly take away the child. They have since desisted with that, that was given to me by Christopher Stock from the police department. We have, every time we have a sunny day like today, although we didn't have it today, we have a, not a beatbox or a radio, but we have a loudspeaker in the yard while simultaneously using power tools, not quite sure of the connection there, with music. Yesterday, we had, with only children around, a loud rap record with "Suck My D-Bee," I think you can fill in the expletives there, repetitively. My child came in, he's 10 years old, it's disgusting and repulsive, I think it should be stopped. I called the police yesterday, they came out, they turned it down briefly and then turned it back up. The last thing we've seen is we now have a redneck trailer park where a camper van turned up 11 days ago. There are two people living in the camper van, I believe it's illegal under Mount Shasta city ordinance. Now we have numerous vehicles of dubious nature arriving and leaving and parked on the street. The last thing to arrive was a dumpster, which shows me there's a multiple occupancy, you know, what would you call it, a apartment complex-type dumpster has arrived and been delivered. I understand from conversations with Keith Hamrick from Northbound Coffee Roasters that the camp, and the city, Rhonda at the city told me the camp has been cited twice, sorry.
I'm sorry, you need to...
Last thing, just quickly, Mr. Bruce Pope, Keith Hamrick has emailed you three times with photographs, he has called you, I have called, not you, but Dave Smith from Code, nobody has responded to us, please be accountable, please stop this going on. If it was on your street and your neighbors, you'd have got rid of them a long time ago. I ask the city to deal with this matter, thank you.
Thank you, Marcus.
If I might, for the record, this individual owns his property, has been officially cited and taken to court on two different occasions by the city, and we're now following up and taking further remedial action to try to correct the problem. You are correct, it is a very serious problem.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention.
I can do this thing, sorry. That's all.
Okay, now we're on to staff comments, please, and then council comments.
So, to begin with, for the record, with the council action regarding Crystal Geyser, I signed the discharge permit as it was approved by council, and that signed permit has been forwarded to Richard Wecklich, the Executive Vice President of Crystal Geyser, so we have completed that phase of the process. We've also been working with DIAC for some time, and the idea of painting the Parker Plaza parking lot wall with a mural. To this far, thus far, the Public Works Department has cleared the debris, they have primed the wall, and DIAC is now prepared to start painting the mural that they'd approved, which would be a combination of California poppies and California quail. We also looked at the condition of the planters in the parking lot, and the landscaped or non-landscaped area in front of the mural with Public Works, putting together some cost estimates of how to improve the planters in that area and maybe upgrade it. And so that will be going back to DIAC for consideration and also the beautification to coordinate activities on that. Additionally, we've been spending time working with development companies, one in particular, USA Property Fund located out of Roseville, is a company that builds, owns, operates multifamily housing projects, both market rate and affordable. We have sent information, they've exchanged emails, and they're interested in looking at Mount Shasta as a potential project area, so we're incorporating, or attempting to incorporate them into the proposals from the two development companies so they can be considered as part of the landing proposal when those come forward. We've also been working in the modular building industry and trying to convince them that they should do a modular building project, Mount Shasta as a demonstration project, how they might use their techniques in the modular industry to build sound and affordable housing. Additionally, we have had a lot of event permits that have been pending, it's that time of year we start planning our special events, so to date, we have approved a series of event permits, one being Earth Day, which would be on May 21st and 22nd, we also approved the Dotson Roadster Meet, which will be July 14th of this year, and the Y-SAC Conference will be out at the park, and that will be on May 11th, 12th, and 13th. We approve the Science Fair for May 19th, and a Taste of Shasta for May 28th. The Taste of Shasta is a Chamber of Commerce event they're putting on, which will feature local restaurants, basically food court operation on Main Street, so everybody will get a chance to go down and sample the best taste of Mount Shasta, so we're looking forward to that. Also, in the permit area, the Best of Shasta, an event that was planned for downtown, we went through three different attempts at a permit, and they finally decided they were better off at the resort area, so they're going to hold their permit, I mean, they're going to hold their event at the Mount Shasta Resort. In terms of other events, we have submitted through Ms. Casey, the application through OPR for two, what we're referring to as water fellows. If approved, they will be here, and they will work on plotting the water, wastewater infrastructure for the city and to develop the GIS base, very similar to what we talked about at the basic engineering study, so we're very hopeful that that will take place.
For the audience's benefit, could you tell us who OPR is?
Office of Planning and Research, thank you. And as I mentioned, the Berry Street is a problem, and we are following up on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other staff report?
So to begin with, I'd like to follow up on solid waste. So on March 21st, I attended the Solid Waste Management Regional Group Meeting in Wyrika, presented the assessment that we talked about previously for solid waste, there was no interest in, from any other jurisdiction, for working with the city to develop a solid waste assessment. Thankfully, the next day, I did meet privately with CalRecycle and Siskiyou County to discuss the assessment, and both parties were interested in helping or partnering with the assessment in some way. Unfortunately, that doesn't include work, additional work, so we would still be obligated to put up the scope of work for that. For housing, Bruce and I approached our county board supervisor, Ed Valenzuela, about regional housing discussion and setting up a meeting with the county administrators with Ed, so what we've decided to do is merge the planning department's quarterly meeting with the county to do some internal discussions on what that would look like. Planning Commission, upcoming ordinances, is mural review, which is a discussion of non-commercial murals, Bruce brought up one, there's been interest in additional murals in the city, we don't have a process for dealing with them, so Planning Commission has been discussing how that should work. The other ones are non-conforming uses, and we have a draft lighting ordinance, I'm not quite sure when we're gonna schedule that one, but that one is available if it wants to come up sooner rather than later. Other business, general plan, contractors have been priced out and added to a proposed 1819 budget request, and then I'm about halfway through with a Gantt chart to complete milestones, cost factors, city continues to prepare and participate also in the local hazard mitigation plan renewal with Siskiyou County. We have 13 upcoming development projects, we have five new commercial development proposals, four new housing proposals, and four...
Could you slow down, Juliana, just a little slower on this last piece?
Sure. We have 13 upcoming developments, we have five new commercial, which would be ground up, four new housing proposals, and four commercial renovation additions. Planning Department has been receiving an average of three to five calls a day to discuss new developments, so the 13 that I listed are real developments, so those are ones who are starting the process or are currently in the process. Cannabis application period opened last week Wednesday, and it is open until the 18th of this month. We've received two additional license applications that I will review once that's done. Our developments are progressing at a steady pace, we have two completely new facilities that are in the building permit process with hopes to complete buildings in 2019 and 2020. The Bureau of Cannabis Control visited the city last week Tuesday to inspect retail facilities, the inspections were preliminary to get facilities used to the process. All three facilities did very well with very few infractions, no citations were given, and none of the shops were closed for those infractions. And then the city is preparing for their first initial inspections of one of our cultivation facilities in the next week, and then the city will be trialing a new inspection sheet that will be shared with the Bureau of Cannabis Control to ensure compliance. The BCC does not have a inspection list yet for how they inspect facilities, so I've been in the process of making one for ourselves, but based on the conversation I had with them last Tuesday, we're gonna be sharing those to compare notes and try and put together a more comprehensive inspection list.
And they'll pay you for that, right?
No.
One other thing we might follow up on here, that the mayor and I attended a meeting with Kim Vaughn, who is the State Director for the U.S. Department of Agriculture, and purpose of the meeting was one, to get acquainted, two, was the signing of the loan and grant documents for the wastewater treatment plant expansion, and she signed off both on the $9 million loan and the $2 million grant, so that all goes towards the improvement of wastewater treatment plant. That will coincide with the $6 million we're planning from the state, which leaves 1.6 million that would be funded by city fees that you had dealt, developed through your 2018 process.
Thank you, that's a good one to remind us of. Juliana, I want to thank you for your report, too, a lot going on, amazing amount of work. Could you please repeat the housing, the merging thing with the county? Thank you.
One of the Housing Discovery Report recommendations was to look at housing on a regional level with the City of Weeds, City of Dunsmere, and Siskiyou County, and so we approached our county board supervisor last week about what that might look like, and so we want to have, since they're gonna be a bigger partner with us directly because of our sphere of influence and everything like that, we want to kind of set up how they see things going as far as their ability to contribute. I did touch on it with City of Dunsmere administration and city council members this last Friday, but I would like to coordinate with the county first, because worst-case scenario, if we do approach it regionally, we really only need the City of Mount Shasta and the county like bare bones, but we would like to have the other two cities involved, and McLeod if they're interested, if we want to extend that far.
So that was a meeting with Supervisor Valenzuela?
Correct.
And that was a sort of a tentative agreement about how to move forward?
Yeah, it was just kind of a feeler thing, we're gonna put information together about possible options, and then like I said, we'll meet with them, the county administrators, Ed, and Bruce and I agreed to meet, to discuss that at our second quarter planning meeting.
Juliana, I understand the concept of looking at this matter regionally, the city council has taken a unanimous position that anyone who works in the City of Mount Shasta should be able to afford to live in Mount Shasta, and therefore, the city council has taken the position that we ought to be developing housing at all levels for people who are working at all levels of income here in Mount Shasta.
Is there a question or a point?
That's not a question, I would like you to incorporate that into future discussions and planning when you meet with others.
Okay, thank you. Any other staff report? Okay, comments from councilmembers. John, have you any?
Nope.
Paul. Barbara. Tim. Okay, I just have one, and that is to, I just quickly would like to review the Earth Day happenings, and for those of you in the audience, there are some posters back on the back table if you'd like further information. On Saturday the 14th, which is I believe next Saturday, Audubon and Partners are featuring the invasive weed poll that we heard about at our last city council meeting, from 8:30 to lunch, including lunch, at City Park, I know Rotary's a partner, and there are others, the Chamber...
I know Rotary's a partner, and there are others, the Chamber, Bioregional Ecology Center. It's a really fun event to go out and roll up your sleeves and pull out some weeds and then be treated to lunch, 8:30 until approximately 1 o'clock at City Park on Saturday, the 14th. Then on Saturday, the 21st, Clean and Safe is sponsoring a cleanup event. The posters are also on the back table, and they are asking for volunteers, of course. The event is scheduled from 11:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. Oh, no, I'm sorry, that's the recycling day. 9:00 a.m. until noon on Saturday, the 21st. They're looking for individuals to help with registration, setup, and then they'll organize you into going out and doing cleanup projects based on where the need is greatest. There is a number to coordinate with. It's Glenn Harvey, GlennHarvey54@gmail.com. So if you're in the mood to help spruce up our community, please join them. It's a fun group of people. Then the county is sponsoring two events, both of which are scheduled for the 21st also. One is, they're both recycling days. One is for tires, and the other is for other recyclables. There's not a free trash day this year. It turned out to be extremely expensive for the county to have hosted that. They regret not being able to do it again, but they're looking for tires and appliances, including no refrigerators, freezers, or air conditioning units, but they're looking for other appliances, batteries, electronic waste, fluorescent bulbs, mattresses, scrap metal tires, except for business tires, and used motor oil filters. So you may want to take your opportunity, 11 to 3 on the 21st, at both our Black Butte Transfer Station as well as Happy Camp, Tulley Lake, and Wyreka's.
Are the items that you read going to be accepted for free or not?
Yes, they're accepted for free. And it's 11 to 3, or whenever the trailer fills up, whichever comes first. I should say that because we had issues with that last year. So if you're really intent on unloading your stuff, I would get there earlier than later. So thank you to the county for hosting that. And then lastly, oh, there's two more things. The Mount Shasta Bioregional Ecology Center, of course, is having their annual Earth Day event on Sunday at City Park from 11 to 6, celebratory event, music, vendors, activities, program. You can find details online about that. And then lastly, the Mount Shasta Trail Association does their annual cleanup of campsites at Castle Craggs, and I failed to get the date for that one, I'm sorry. But I'm sure you can find that one online as well. Okay, so, next. On our agenda then is the consent agenda, which I will read. City manager recommends approval of the following consent agenda items. All resolutions and ordinances on this agenda or added hereto shall be introduced or adopted as applicable by title only, and the full reading thereof is hereby waived. A, approval of minutes from the March 26, 2018 Regular City Council Meeting. B, acceptance of the Brown Act Committee minutes from the Downtown Enhancement Advisory Committee of February 28. C, approval of a resolution of support for Clean and Safe Mount Shasta, CCR 18-20, in your packets. And D, approval of resolution opposing the Tax Fairness, Transparency, and Accountability Act of 2018, CCR 18-21, in your packets. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second with one minor correction. There's a typo in the minutes for the break time. If you could just correct that.
Okay, okay, so there's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, we move now to item number eight on your agendas, the Library Architectural and Engineering Agreement. The report is by the Library Ad Hoc Committee. So John and Paul, may we hear from you?
So we had a meeting about two weeks ago with the Library, the LTAC members, Dennis Johnson and Merle, and Courtney, the librarian, to talk about mainly what possible costs could be removed or decreased in an attempt to bring the cost of the planning stage of this project well below the RFP bid that we have from a local firm. It's currently at $256,000. It's the position of the LTAC's leadership that not only could the lead section of the proposal, but also the public outreach section, the surveying section, and the large parts of the architectural line item be either eliminated or reduced dramatically. And another item would be the ground engineering aspects of the bid. That would be where an engineer would come in and examine the ground underneath the proposed expansion area to make sure it's fit for building. So LTAC believes that a lot of this work has been done and would like it to be incorporated into a new RFP proposal and then be sent back out to potential bidders in hopes that the new planning stage cost would be dramatically lower, possibly $100,000 lower. So bringing the cost of this stage of the project down into the 150 or possibly even lower levels. And that seems a reasonable choice to me, to give them a chance to work with the city, to the city staff, to come up with a new bid, an RFP proposal to send out to the public in hopes of actually accomplishing that goal of reducing the cost of the planning stage.
Okay, and is this, do you have anything to add, Paul?
No, that's accurate to what happened and what we discussed. So that's what LTAC was requesting that we-
Right.
-do exactly as John stated.
And your recommendation, as I read it, was to approve that revised scope of services and re-advertise the project in an attempt to further reduce the anticipated cost? That's your recommendation?
My recommendation, yes, that's my recommendation.
I have mixed emotions about, mixed opinions about that, whether it can be accomplished, whether the fees can be brought down that much. LTAC has put a lot of work and effort into this. So I'm not, you know, I'm reluctantly going to go along with this, but I don't, I'm not 100% convinced that can happen, but I'm going to go ahead and recommend that as well.
Questions of, now, as I understand it, the staff recommendation was to accept the revised scope of work, option number two?
Originally, staff's recommendation that they brought before you, I believe on March 12th, was approve the contract as negotiated. At that meeting, the mayor appointed the ad hoc committee in reaction to the concerns raised by LTAC about whether the scope of services was really reflective of what was needed and their concerns about the cost. We did negotiate with the selected consultant, Mount Shasta Engineering, and that is option two. They did remove some $50,000 from their bid, so their new bid, if the council approved that, would be for $199,500. One of the issues that we're going to have to deal with here is the geotechnical studies, surveys, these are all things that are required under the law. We cannot record parcels without adequate surveys. We do not have an adequate survey. You have to do the geotechnical study. It is part of CEQA. It is a requirement. If you can't just eliminate it, you can bid it and maybe get a more favorable pricing. So you have a very important project here. It's called the library. You are the library board. You have an advisory group, and we're talking about the expansion of a very important public facility. And so we're asking for the council input, how do you want to approach this? What do you think is the best approach to go forward with this project? Do we want to make a statement of the future Mount Shasta? Do we want to make a statement, we're going to do this as cheaply as possible? What is the policy we need to be here? Your ad hoc committee held a lot of meetings, took a lot of input, and it's not a whole set of real simple little answers to come to. It is completed, and it is an important project.
Thank you. So I do have a question about process. So as I recall, once the ad hoc committee was appointed, you first met with staff and the selected contractor to understand perspectives.
We reported back on that.
Right, you reported back on that. Then you met with LTAC and heard their concerns.
Reported back on that.
And you reported back on that. And I was thinking that you had asked the LTAC committee to supply you with background data, background drawings, background data, to substantiate their thought that they could reduce the cost by a greater amount. My question is, did that happen?
So the lead line item, we're opting to have that eliminated, both in two and three, these options here. The outreach line item, where you go to the public and have one, two, or three invites for people to come and state their opinion about the library expansion, is considered to have already happened, so that's been eliminated from options two and three also. The questions to LTAC were, can you supply as substitutes certified documents regarding surveying, geotechnical aspects, and architectural drawings to a certain extent? And they believe they can either improve upon what they already have, or they believe that what they have is sufficient. So that leads them to believe that they can drop the cost of the planning phase of this project down more than $50,000.
And did they show those to you so that you also believe them?
They did, and they gave us the impression that they could do more and actually get the certified documents at a better rate, so that a new RFP would already have those items covered.
Other questions from other council members of John and Paul? I have a few others. I'll share the podium here.
Paul, you indicated that you have mixed feelings. Can you expand upon that and explain, please?
Well, I'm not sure that we're going to get certified appraisal or certified survey. The survey that was done was just to locate some property lines. I believe we're going to have to have some, we're going to have to have corners marked and things like that in order for it to be approved through the state, and that's, I think that's going to have to be redone. I'm not exactly sure if the plans are going to get certified or not. If not, whoever bids the RFP probably might have to go over that again to protect themselves as to the quality of the plans and such, and whether it can be done in that fashion. And I know that we're going to have to do engineering in the soils. I mean, it's just, in that area, it just has to be done. I know of several properties around there where it's required, and we don't know exactly what they're going to come up with there, you know? So there's a lot of things in the air. Would I like them to come up with certifications on everything and be able to save money? Absolutely, I would. But we also have to be realistic, and my experience shows me that you have to have certifications on everything in today's world to protect the city. So that's where my mixed emotions come. If we can get this certified through LTAC's connections, I'm okay with that. But then we need to look at what's, you know, what's the roofing material, what's the siding material, what's, you know, there's a lot of unanswered questions, in my opinion.
Did LTAC give indication as to a timeframe for their coming up with the additional information, the certified plans, the certified survey, et cetera?
I'll answer that one. There is nothing firm with respect to a date where any of those last three items I mentioned would be submitted as completed or certified. But I was under the impression, through the course of the discussion, it could be done maybe in 60 to 90 days, so, but no, not, no set dates were really discussed per se, in exact dates.
And if we were to go along with LTAC's request that we basically start over with the RFP process after 60 or 90 days, where does that put construction? Are we losing one construction year?
I would bet we would be, yes.
Thank you.
In the way we're going right now, I don't know if we're, you know, that's up in the air as well.
Can you explain what you mean?
Well, what is it? It's May?
April.
Or April, April 9th, April, May, June, July? I don't know. We'd have to talk to the county, whoever, I don't know. I don't know an answer to that.
I guess I'm a little concerned about dropping some of these elements. Lead design, to me, is a great opportunity to look at nontoxic environment, new materials that have come on the market. This library was built 50 years ago, and again 30 years ago, and lots of progress has been made since then. I'm concerned that we haven't really done enough public outreach and gotten enough opinions. And I thought that LTAC was going to provide some records of actually having done public outreach in the past six years. I was sort of surprised it didn't see anything in the packet. That aspect of reaching out to the public and really getting their feedback on what they see a library is for them today in this community- they see a library is for them today in this community is so important to get up to date with what a modern library provides its community and for many years into the future. And I guess I should be asking questions. There's no question here. I'm wondering whether we're not in a fork in the road. Do we go big and do a fantastic service to the community and do a building that really resonates with the majority of our citizens? Or do we go small and say, what's the minimum we can do to add service, including a simple extension of hours? How can we just begin to look at this, step back a little bit and really, and I'm sorry, I'm in discussion, not questions. Is there a question? So I guess the question is, I'm wondering, have these considerations, in your perspective, in your conversations with LTAC, have these considerations been discussed, talked about?
In a way, yes. The vision for the project from LTAC is contained in the drawing, the drawing that they showed us and they've presented to planning and the city staff. And they foresee the development of the interior and features of the interior being something that's addressed after the shell of the building, the actual expansion is completed. I believe that they think that after the construction is completed and decisions are made on the interior, it will be a, it'll be a very appropriate library facility for the needs of the community. As to whether they think it's a leading edge facility, that wasn't really expressed, but definitely, they definitely foresee the facility helping the community to have better access and a better library, no question about that.
Right, but my concern, of course, is, that's akin to conversation.
The leading edge aspect, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you don't know what's going inside the building yet, if you're saying, let's just build the shell, it seems premature because where are you going to put your outlets? Where are you going to, what kind of outlets you're going to put in, stuff like that? So, okay, I'm doing a discussion, okay.
Through the chair. John and Paul, I would anticipate that there would be costs associated with delay. There'd be difference in building costs, there'd be difference in interest rates for this overall project. Did you have an opportunity to look at various pro forma budgets? One, if there isn't a delay, one, if there is a delay? Because we're really only talking about $50,000. I don't know if that $50,000 savings, potential savings, would be eaten up with increased costs of building materials, increased interest rates. And I think the only way of determining that would be with pro forma budgets.
Well, I think that's a good point, and it's obviously, the projection is that building costs and interest rates are going to go up from what I have read. So what percentage? I don't have any idea, but they will. I mean, we have to look at projects that are delayed as a, what, 5%, 10% increase every year usually is what we look at. You know, we don't have a crystal ball, but that's kind of the gauge that we go on right now.
Well, if I may add, it's assumed that the cost of the project will be in the $300 to $350 range for construction, hopefully in the $300 range. Will that go up over the next few months? Construction inflation is always an issue, but I think it's safe to say that the construction phase of the project's going to be $1.2 to $1.4 million, hopefully on the 1.2 level. The LTAC itself doesn't have the funds to pay for all of that. Their reserve is about $400,000. The general thinking is that the less of the reserves that is spent on the planning stage can be committed to, dedicated to the construction phase, thereby lowering the amount of money that would have to be financed. So the ultimate goal was for, in all the discussions I've heard, is for the surplus from the actual tax. The hope would be that, which is about 60, 50 to 60, maybe $70,000 each year, depending on repairs and so forth on the older part of the library, that that would be sufficient to cover a loan of 1.2 million or thereabouts. I think interest rates would be somewhere between 3% and 4%, but yeah, certainly rising, so, but the interest rate increase environment, it's not a radical jump to be expected. It'd be fractions of 1% over the next few months. But yeah, I would agree, there'd be some increased costs.
Thank you. I do have a few. Do we know if Mount Chastity Engineering, the selected contractor, would submit a bid if we readvertised this, given the timeframe, the delay in time? When you met with Nick, did he indicate, did you ask him whether he would reapply? Re-submit a bid?
I had, I posed that exact question to Mr. Riddle, and he said, they're looking at it, but they have not made a decision at this time. But the longer we delay, the more difficult it is for him to keep the subcontractors and the price together.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so option number three, can you tell me how you think readvertising with a reduced scope, what the chances are readvertising with a reduced scope would actually result in a decreased cost overall? You feel pretty confident?
Well, yeah, the assumption is that the items that I listed before would be eliminated from the scope of the RFP, and therefore the cost would go down.
Which includes the architectural design? Does that include that?
Well, large parts of it, yes, yeah. And the engineering, the soil engineering, geotechnics that were usually used, and the land surveying.
So is it staff, does staff agree that those things could be eliminated? Or are those that you have expressed can't be mitigated?
You're going to have to have a recordable survey, do this project eventually. So therefore, the question becomes, who is going to do that survey? It has to be done by a licensed surveyor that has adequate license to do that. You just can't pick three people off the street and go out and do this. So you could, if LTAC has a survey that meets recording standards, recorded with the county, we can look at that. And if they do in fact have that survey with the boundaries and everything, elevations that meet the requirements for recording, then of course, we could record that and eliminate that from the scope of services.
Well, I thought that was part of what we were going to, you folks were going to get from them the last time we met, some of that background material. Did you not get that?
What we received from, the information we received from LTAC was that the surveyor came out and did lines, said the building can fit within there, but the question I had was, it's not, it's at this point not a recordable survey because there's pins missing. And to be a recordable survey, you have to locate property pins and place them. So that's going to have to, you know, he's probably done, we were, I think Mount Chastity Engineering uses the same surveyor, so he might be able to use some of his points of reference on the survey and save some time and go out there and finish it. So I believe that they spent $2,500 for that, I'm not sure.
There's an opportunity.
$1,200, but you know, it's probably, I would guess, five grand or something for a survey like that to finish it out.
It would be, my reaction that before, if you're going to readvertise this, you need to actually answer those questions. Do you have a recordable survey? Yes or no? In hand, to the county, record it. If you don't, you get a contract for it. Do you have a geotechnical study that meets the requirements of state law under CEQA? Yes or no? Where is it? If you don't have it, contract for it. Now, you could, you obviously can take this and break this thing into little pieces and contract all those out, but then you're asking subsequent, you know, potentially subsequent consultants to rely on other consultants' work, and that can run into problems. So I think getting it done by one company that you can hold accountable would be the best way to go, in my opinion. But if work has, if this council wants to say, we're not doing lead certified, then we can take that out. If we're saying the public outreach has been fulfilled, then we can take that out. That's very clear, we can take those two out. And that's what we negotiated with the contract to got us down to $199. Will the, will a revised bid going out to architectural companies that basically the same process we used previously produce a bid by a qualified consultant at a more affordable price? And the only way to really know the answer is to put that out there and find out. That's just, you're speculating.
Thank you. So about public outreach, did you ask for, and did you see the records that these folks have accumulated over the many meetings that they held earlier about, so the response that they got? Did you see them? Was that part of what you asked for?
They had a long narrative of everything that's gone on regarding the library expansion process, and contained in there were discussions amongst different groups. I can't say it was an out and out, you know, outreach akin to what happened for this RFP, but they went through the full narrative of every event that transpired with respect to what they were, you know, doing in the development of this expansion.
Is it, so this is a planning question, it goes back to public outreach. So in the CEQA process, Juliana, I could see that there could be a design proposal, you know, that would go, that would come as the proposal itself, which would include all of the work that precedes that, that would come before the public, and they would have an opportunity, would they not, to comment on that?
Not necessarily, no. So the public outreach that you had previously talked about is related to design input, it's related to preferential strategic planning type things for the library. When we get to the CEQA process, you have a 30 to 60 day noticing period for the public to give comments on just the environmental review. So this does not, the CEQA process is not a public input session for design, for amendments to anything. It really goes in and it's just trying to get the public's or responsible agency reaction to the project itself. So that's the time period that the water board or the Army Corps of Engineers would come in and talk about wetlands and water resources. The public comments are strictly requested to stay on topic of the environmental review. For example, we do have a CEQA process that just occurred, I want to say, late last year, and we received comments about the development in general, and we have to basically throw those out because it has nothing to do with the environmental, so we don't even address those.
So there were two open house meetings held recently, within the last year, I can't remember the date, and that was an opportunity, just a second, Dennis, thank you. There was an opportunity for people to comment on the design, on anything they wanted to. As I recall, it was very open-ended. And we had those, and those would be transmitted to the selected contractor.
Correct, as well as other material that LTAC has. So when I had a chance to review that, they were pretty comprehensive.
Their public outreach comments?
Yeah, their collection of notes were pretty comprehensive. You know, they did have a low population turnout, which happens in small communities, but they did have some decent input from that. One thing to note is, in addition to the CEQA process, is that the library, like other commercial developments, would have to submit an architectural design guideline application, ideally because it's not the city, it doesn't make sense to pay ourselves for that, but we have taken it through a preliminary architectural guideline kind of review with planning commission. So planning commission will have an opportunity to have a public meeting related to the proposal, but that's once it's in draft form prior to city council review. So if you do want to sit back and look at all of the public input that's allowed for this type of project, you should have at least one meeting at the city council level, you should have at least one meeting at the planning commission level. So those could fit in for your public input, but that would be on the back end of the project, that would not be proactive input. So, you know, we have discussed as well, is once the landscaping does come into a factor, then you're introducing the beautification committee, but we are not putting, I'm not recommending, and I don't think staff continues to recommend to put the landscape into this proposal at this time.
Other questions?
Can you tell me about the birthing of the architectural drawing? Was there any brainstorming sessions? Were there other designs that were considered, or was this the single design that came through the birthing process?
The design, the genesis of that design, I don't know the complete details of how it came to be, but I believe they hired someone to, they work with, but Dennis can address when he gets a chance, the actual details of where those drawings came from.
And do you have the list of guidelines that were given?
Dennis would have to answer that question, too.
So what I'd like to do is, once we're finished with our questions, I'd like to give Dennis a chance to respond to the questions, and I will give you more than three minutes. Okay, so, but I'd like to finish with the council questions first. Any other questions of our ad hoc or staff?
Any conversations about fire load and fire fuel and the location, current location?
Okay, okay, thank you. Good questions, conversation. Dennis, if you would like to come up and share your perspective, appreciate it.
My name is Dennis Johnson. I'm the chairman of the LTAC committee. I'm a little, obviously, there's a little bit of confusion here. What we asked the ad hoc committee to do was not start this whole process over again. We looked at the original RFP, which is really more on RFQ, because it didn't get very specific about exactly what we needed, it just threw everything into it. And so out of that RFQ came three qualified candidates, and they were ranked in their things. And then it was presented to, their number one ranking was chassis engineering. Our goal was to have the, and out of that, then two of the firms have stayed in the bidding and said they're still interested, chassis engineering and Hummer Associates out of Chico. Our goal was then to get together with, and what we asked them to do, and maybe we weren't clear about this, was not start the RFP process all over again, but merely to meet with those two firms that are qualified and go over, have a site visit, and go over the work that we've already done, so they can make a reasonable bid on the work that needs to continue to be done. Now, we have done a survey, but that may not be a survey, and it's up for them to decide. It's up for them to decide what the architectural work that we've already done is. But they can't make a reasonable bid without a site visit and without a meeting with the people that have been working on the design of this project for the last five years. And we did present a huge document to the city that goes through all of the meetings we've had, public meetings, starting in 2013, I believe. Tim was at the first meeting that we did, and, and with the minutes from all those meetings, and there's like, there's like 12 public meetings where this has been discussed. We presented that to you guys, you have, you have that document there. So I think the scoping process has been pretty thorough. When we started up the project again in 2016, we, again, we got together a committee of, of people from the community that had indicated interest, representing a lot of different groups, including the City Council. And, and that's when we decided that, when we realized that the scoping process was going to cost us all this money, and we said, "Well, we can do this ourselves, we've already done a lot of it." And so we continued to have meetings and scoping process. We got a, a local designer to volunteer his time, Chris Snyder, to come in and start drawing up plans on the basis of the input that we'd been getting from Courtney and from other people in the community as to what we wanted, and that's what we've put together. So we, what we feel is, we've done a great deal of the architectural problem. Now, we haven't done it all, and that's up for the engineering and architectural firms to decide how much what we've done has already been, been to, and therefore, what they don't need to do. Right now, they're just operating in the dark, because all they've got is an, an RFP that does not represent the work that actually needs to be done. We should have a site visit where they can come onsite, we can go over what we've done, they can then make a, a reasonable bid on what's left. And I don't know what that bid's going to be, but I know it's got to be lower than the initial bids, because, you know, they're, they're bidding on something, they don't really have a, have a clue as to what, what's already been, been accomplished. So we're not talking about starting the process over again. We're talking about going to the two qualified firms with a revised RFQ, presenting that at a scoping meeting, so they can understand what we need done. We're not asking them to do something that they don't want to do, you know? And each firm may decide they want to do different things, that's fine. But I'm sure that we can get a, a more reasonable approach. I don't know what that's going to be, but we're not starting this project over. As far as delay in the project, we're not going to do anything this year in terms of breaking ground. That's not going to happen, no matter what we do. We think if we take this approach that we've been talking about, that probably in a month or so time, we should be able to get these, the two firms together, have a meeting, so they can understand what we actually need to do, and what they feel they need to do to meet the qualifications of the RFP. We're not talking about a new one. And at that time, we can go ahead, hopefully, and award a contract. And, and, but right now, the price of the contract that we're talking about is, is something that I don't think anybody in LTAC who has the fiduciary responsibility to the community to see that that money is spent wisely, that we're not willing to spend that kind of money on the, on a, on a, on the planning process. And if we comes down some, well, then we'll have to make the decision at that time. But right now, everybody's kind of operating in the dark. So we're not talking about starting the process over. If we can get the planning process underway this summer, then we're not going to be, start doing a contract until next year. There's no contracting firm out there that's going to say, "Oh, we're going to start, you know, in, in August." It's just not going to happen. So I don't think there's any delay involved in the process. But what we need to do is, we need to move on to this next process, so that we can start to get out and find out what fundraising out there. Bruce has identified some places that we can hopefully get some, some grants. We'll also be studying, but we can't do that until we get this next phase done and we get a, we get a contract out there. So, so our, our goal is not to, to try to outguess Shasta Engineering or, or Hummer and Associates into what they feel they need to do to get the final product, which is wet stamp plans that we can take to the, to the, to the planning department and say, "Hey, this is the project we want to build," and have the planning department say, "Okay," then we can go out and, and do the bidding process. So I, I think there's a little confusion here about where we're going.
Thank you, yes, apparently. I, thank you, Dennis, very much. I wonder if we could hear from staff, your comment on the, the process that LTAC had hoped would occur? The, the legality of it, the feasibility of it, the, of going back to two contractors and negotiating with them about a revised scope of work, and then going from there?
Madam Mayor, before we hear from staff, I, for one, would like to hear from Merle. See if he has anything, see if he has anything to add.
If, if, yeah, I would like, yes. Okay, no, Merle, just a second, please. So what is your response, if you will, to, to the process that Dennis laid out?
Well, if you were, if, if the council were inclined to follow that process, my first recommendation was that you not reserve it to two of the three firms. You had three respondees, and I think if you're going to negotiate it, it should be with all three, so you aren't excluding anybody. That'd be my first recommendation. Then whether you re-advertise the RFP or you negotiate with firms, and you have legally, you can do either one. You commit, you've completed your public bid process, so you can negotiate directly with all three or any one of the three firms and arrive at a price that you're comfortable with going forward. What I understand Dennis is stating, and he stated previously, is they, they would like the prospective contractors to see the outreach work they did. They would like the prospective contractor to see the design they've come up with and say, "This is LTAC's design. Now, we, we need to go from this design to a finished and a construction joint." So they, they fully understand what they're bidding on, and to review maybe the site surveys, and let the consultants say, "Well, okay, given what you've done, then this is what we need to do." They, they can then resubmit their bids. And that would be, I've checked with the city attorney, that would be permitted under our processes. You can do this. You could re-advertise the process totally, open it up again, and make the site visit in the meeting with LTAC and city staff a requirement of the new process. So you could include it either way.
Thank you. Merle, if you'd like to add to that? This is a, a little unusual in terms of process, but this is a very important decision, as we've talked about.
That's an out-of-the-look public comment, either.
I'm sorry?
The general public.
The, the, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm doing now is giving the, our committee members an opportunity to speak for longer than three minutes, and then we'll open it up for general public to speak for the typical three-minute period.
Well, thank you, yeah. I thought I'd been invited here by the ad hoc committee to talk about this before a lot of the discussion. There's a report I wrote dated March 26, 2018, that went to the ad hoc committee, and apparently it's not in your packet, where LTAC had a special meeting on March 26, and we discussed the issue, and I presented a letter to them, and, and they discussed it. I'm very impressed by the, by the LTAC committee, they're very, you know, there was some sticker shock here, but there was also the feeling that a lot of the work they had done over the last several years, working with Chris Snyder and Ron Stevens and other community input, working with Courtney's input about what she would prescribe for library space, all that work, and Chris did drawings, they even went to, I can't remember the person's name, it's a Joe Peterson that reviews designs and, and things, and then, and she's checked it out. A lot of work, I'm impressed by the amount of work that they've done. So when we get to this part of the process, it seems that the RFP, it was a great, great proposal that Shasta Engineering submitted, is architectural, you know, like it was going to be designed from scratch, and LTAC's position is, "Well, no, it's not being designed from scratch. What we really need are engineering drawings and, and start working towards getting the building permit. We don't want to start the whole design process all over again and, and go through that." So that's what we felt was lacking here. There was some sticker shock about it, but there was also what we felt was a lack of focus, in that if they focused on the, on not the design work, but on the engineering work and the things that are required, LTAC certainly isn't saying, "Well, yeah, we don't want engineering, and we don't, or we, no, we don't want surveys if they're required, or the geotechnical work." Obviously, there's decisions that need to be made about what is adequate already and what needs to be refined. But if we could focus this project on those engineering elements, if the bidders could see what is available, we talked about the packet, that what we call the design package that LTAC has, let them look at all that information and evaluate it, and, and they can understand, "Okay, we don't need to reinvent this, we don't need to redesign that, we can take that and start working towards the building permits for the project." LTAC and the design team would like to be involved in this and make progress and take the leverage from what's been accomplished already. As Dennis said, there's been several years of work and a lot of volunteer input from not only the general public, but from some building design professionals. And so that's our position, is to focus this, to get a, get the dollar amount down and work progressively. We appreciate the work that the city's done and staff has done, you know, this, this is a little stumble, it's not a big setback, but LTAC was very excited about the cost that was proposed here, and they felt, just about every member that I sat down with on the LTAC committee felt that this could be focused, and the price could be brought down, and we'll still make great progress. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I'm, again, this is before we go to general public comment, I want to give you, Nick, an opportunity to comment on anything here before you, any comments that have been made by our LTAC committee members or staff, and I know I haven't given you a heads up on that, but if you would like to present a, some, from your perspective, it, it may be helpful at this point.
Would you like to?
Yes. For those of you in the audience who don't know, if you could introduce yourself, Nick, but he, he was the selected contractor for this project.
Yeah, my name is Nicholas Riddle with Mount Shasta Engineering. We've been, we've been the respondent to the original RFP. You know, we spent a lot of time putting our best foot forward with that proposal, and appreciate the opportunity to enter into contract negotiations, which we have been spending an awful lot of time on. And, you know, with all due respect, I think at this point, I don't want to comment anymore on the technical aspects of what everybody's talking about, because I don't think it's going to quite ever get there between what an engineer feels needs to be done, or an architect, and, you know, what everybody, what everybody else thinks needs to be done. You know, I think that the whole process has been slightly misguided from how it was solicited, and how we've been asked to enter into negotiations with the understanding that the city was ready to make an award based on a scope of work that we put together. And, you know, that most of those items, it's just not in the dark, most of those items are all required. I'm not going to do the project without its soils report. We need topo to do site improvements. We, we need the information. You know, we agreed, and again, I appreciate the opportunity with Bruce to delete the things that, you know, did add specific costs to the project, but also added product, you know, added value to the final product, you know? And then I think that's, that could be argued for a long time. So, you know, as far as, as far as the thought that our original bid, our original task-based fee schedule as, in the public record, and our negotiated, you know, reduced scope fee schedules in the public record, to ask me to go out to the site because I maybe didn't think about everything or understand everything that's going on, I don't, I really don't understand that, and I don't think it's fair. I'm not, I'm just going to leave it at that. You know, again, like Bruce said, I'm not sure, I'm really not sure what to do as far as, you know, if you guys rebid it to, to respond again, simply because you're giving other people my scope of work, my proposal, my cost, my renegotiated cost, it's all in the public record, and then you're asking someone else to come in who hasn't spent all that time to come in and, you know, provide a different idea and cost. So I question the fairness and the whole process, to be quite honest. I hope we can still come to some sort of a resolution on this. I respect LTAC and the City Council and staff and everything, but I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you all for your candor, I appreciate it. I would like to open it up to a general public comment now. Are there others of you who would like to comment on this issue and opportunity?
Hi, I don't give public comment very often. My name is Juliana Lucchese, I'm a resident of the city of Dunsmere. I also serve the city as a city planner, but I would like to take a moment, and I apologize. I'm also the timekeeper, and I'll take 15 seconds off my time, to be fair to everybody So my family's, my family has a mechanical contracting company that's been in business since 1924. I have spent my entire life with them, my uncle, my mother, my father, my cousins, my other aunts all work there, and so I was practically born under a desk there. I officially started working at 12, but let's be real, I was working there before then. And, you know, they're a great company, and I don't want to talk about that, but one of the things I want to talk about is how many mistakes we've fixed. And we are mainly industrial and commercial-based mechanical contracting, and so I've seen a lot of these plans, I've heard a lot of these conversations my entire life. And the number of projects that we have come back, because we are not typically the lowest bid, you know, we value our workers and we're union, but we have time and time again come back for service contracts, and we've come back to fix the problems that occur because of conversations like this. I mean, you're cutting the bottom line just for cost's sake, and you know, you really have to step back and take a look at what you're doing. You're investing in your community, you're taking locally collected tax dollars and investing it into a public facility. This isn't, you know, build for as cheap as you can. I mean, there's a very, very fine line between cheap and being fiscally responsible, and I don't think that's what we're talking about here. You know, you do have a lot of other opportunities to invest at the construction phase. I've already been contacted by Solano's, as well as other individuals in the community who want to contribute to this project at the construction phase. So you have those people there that can be tapped at that time. You also have capital campaign opportunity here, and you always have the opportunity to use your initial investment like this as an in-kind donation for future grants. And that's a huge thing here. You know, you have to step back and really say, "What is the value of your community? What are you putting into it?" I served in a publicly elected position when I was in Wisconsin, and we began a project about six years ago for the planning and architectural engineering for an athletic complex addition. We've just come out, we're going to break ground next year, it's going to be 58,000 square feet for $20 million. Public buildings are not cheap, that's about $324 a square foot. You know, it's expensive, but I'm invested in them, and I'm invested in the product that they're coming up with that I spent six years ago, a ton of time on, six years of planning and architectural. So, you know, I'm not here to devalue what LTAC's been doing, I'm not here to devalue what anyone's been doing, but when you get to this point of jumping off the cliff, you really need to make sure that your parachute is really secure. And if you're sitting here saying, "Well, maybe I don't need that many lines," you're really not going to end up with a good product. But that is my time, and I'll But that is my time and I'll leave you with, you're investing local dollars in a local firm. I don't know how you can't not win with this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay, complicated conversation. Council discussion.
I can't help but see a little bit conflict of interest. We had a group of library advocates go out and actually get this, the dollars on the ballot for the community to support the library after the county pulled back their funds. These same people who actually helped get these funds into the library are continuing to work with the library. And I can't help but think that maybe it's time for another, it seems like they're very, very invested and very, very guarded on what happens to this money and how it's going to be spent. And I really love that Merle Anderson joined the party, but is it time for others too to come in and really contribute? When I took the library design workshop that the librarian, the library director recommended to the friends of the library board, I took the class. And they saw that a library design is three groups of people. You have first, you have the first group of citizens, and they're all separate and independent of each other. You have the brainstorming group that really thinks about all the possible ideas and all the possible ways we could expand or provide better services. And then you have two, you have the design selection group, which is a whole other group of citizens, and then you have the project build, which is another whole group of citizens. What I'm seeing is that there's a group of citizens that have been, who raised the money for the library and are fighting to, to, to see that money is spent in a certain way. Now, the LTAC is an advisory group to the council. They are here to give us recommendations and the council is decision-making. And I've already talked about the absence of a library board of trustees in, for this facility. And that on the ordinance, the council is the library board of trustees, but we don't really, we haven't really trained ourselves in what that means. So we, we are really kind of, we are in the dark in that as well. I agree with Juliana that this, this public project is an exciting opportunity for the town, for all, all the persons to be involved. I'm concerned that the architectural design doesn't take into consideration the relationship to neighboring buildings, to the fields. I'm concerned that there's no window views at ground level for people to walk by and see what interesting things are going on in the library. These are all recommendations that came out of the library design workshop and other library professionals that talk about what makes a great library, you know? The other thing is that when you Google Earth the library, what you see on your, on your screen is a bunch of bushes because from the street, that's what you see. And many people have walked up Alma looking for the library, can't find it because it's kind of like around the corner. No real entryway, no grand entryway, no inspirational architecture to really welcome you and draw you in. So, many concerns.
Thank you. Other comments?
I guess I'll comment. I am impressed with the group of people that Mount Shasta Engineering has brought together, a group of locals who are very familiar with our community. I would certainly hope and expect Nicholas and others to look at the design packet that LTC has put together and consider that material in moving forward if we were to approve the proposed contract as revised. I feel very reluctant to say to Dennis or anyone else that, that they shouldn't have further opportunity to maybe tighten the scope of the project. But I heard at the last meeting and I hear again that there are certain things that have to be done and they have to be done by licensed personnel. They have to be done in a certain way, whether it's the ground survey or other aspects. So I think I'm leaning towards staff recommendation to approve the proposal of Mount Shasta Engineering as revised.
Which is option number two in the packet. Okay, thank you. Have we heard enough from you gentlemen, or would you like to add more?
Well, my, my, my recommendation at the beginning of this was number three, but after hearing from LTAC, it seemed that more appropriate recommendation would be number four, to continue this and allow or somehow invite the group from Chico to come in and actually work with LTAC as a sufficient amount of time to, to offer a bid for, for this, this planning project, this part of the project. That's where I'm, I'm leaning at this point, but, yeah, that's, that's, that's where I'm at this point. If it's possible to do that, it sounds like there might be some issues.
Paul? Nothing more? Okay, I, I want to acknowledge the years of, years of work that LTAC has put into this with the, with little, little clarification about roles of, you know, city council, project management, any of that. You have taken the bull by the horns and run this library for years. I also would like to acknowledge the work that Nick Riddle has done in good faith, putting together the scope, the project scope, renegotiating. Everyone has, has, I think, been well-intentioned in this. I think there would be no disagreement among any of the players here about the fact that this process has been a mess. We have not done a good job with this process. And I, I feel as responsible for that as anybody. Barbara mentions the board of trustees. I don't, I don't know how the council has operated in that regard, but I would say that at the heart of this issue here is a lack of clarification about who's got what role. We, LTAC in my mind should not have the role of project manager and neither should city council. We need a project manager on this project and that would come from staff, at the staff And, and so I think, I want to apologize for that to all of us. Not, not, not as in feeling responsible for it all, but I'm, I'm sorry it has been such a mess. We hope to clarify that. We need to get this role clarification clear and done. I think that LTAC took on a huge amount because nobody else was doing it and, and now they're, now we're faced with different standards that we're hearing about that you certainly didn't know anything about when you started. And, and we're faced with timing here. We need to get this library expanded. We want to get this thing, we want to improve our library. Bottom line, I, I am not convinced based on what the ad hoc committee folks have said and what I've heard here tonight, that, that re-advertising the project or continuing it, continuing consideration of the contract will bring in a reduced cost. I just haven't, I haven't heard enough to convince me that that's the case. So I'm prepared, at the, at the, at the, at the risk of alienating everyone who's worked on this project for a long time, I'm prepared to recommend option number two, which is to approve the amended contract, the scope of work, the renegotiated work that was done with Mount Shasta Engineering and learn from this example and clean up our process.
May I have a comment? May I have a comment because you passed me?
I did?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sure, I'm sure. I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, I'm leaning more towards approving the initial contract for 256-700 because I think the, I put a tremendous importance on the lead element as well as the public outreach element. I, I'm, I'm not sure how the architectural drawings were birthed, like I said, and I didn't really hear any information from the two persons who came up to speak from LTAC, what brainstorming sessions had taken place before those architectures, architectural drawing was created and what the guidelines were. So I heard nothing on that. Or since you were saying we do need a city staff person to be the project manager and Juliana is very busy doing resiliency and rewriting the general plan, I would say continue the consideration of the contract and project to a later date until we can get a staff project leader on the team when she's ready or when we have a staff person available to be the project team. I'd say either drop the project or go with the original contract.
So is that a motion?
Yeah, we're, we're ready for a motion, I think.
Are you motioning for option D?
I say yes. I move to continue the consideration of the contract and project to a later date.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Paul, are you ready?
I'm going to vote to continue the consideration of the contract.
Okay, that's a, that's a three-two vote in favor of continuing consideration of the contract and project to a later date. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We are.
Can I ask for a clarification of what that means?
Well, you've just continued that to a later date, a date unspecified by the council. And so...
What is to happen in the meantime? What is the intent of?
I would suggest that since you're going to continue this, that staff meet with Merle and Dennis, go over the documents they have and be able to report back on that part of the question. Say, here are the documents, or they don't exist, or they're not adequate. But answer those questions that you have raised and they're legitimate questions.
Right, and I would also...
When we are prepared to do that, then we can re-agend it. If the council chooses to, you can quite appropriately set a date for it now.
Merle Anderson made reference to a March 26 report. I'd also ask that council members be given a copy of that.
You ask what?
That the, that council members be given a copy of Merle Anderson's March 26-18 report.
Right. And I would, in the future, we didn't clarify this apparently, but in the future, I'd really like a report from the ad hoc committees in writing with your recommendations. And if you can't come to agreement, then you say that too. But it needs to be part of what we have a chance to evaluate ahead of time. I would appreciate that. I also would amend what you're saying, Bruce, by saying we need a project manager. Establish who on staff will be the project manager for this and involve that person So is the ad hoc committee, the ad hoc committee was to have been in effect until the scope of work was agreed to. My, what I'm uncertain about right now is whether your job is done, gentlemen? I think not.
I don't think it is.
All right, so what I'm hearing is that the ad hoc committee and staff will review the design packet and other materials, meet with the interested parties, which I think would be LTC and frankly, Mount Shasta Engineering, and then report back to city council?
I think that...
Is that the intent of the, of the motion that just passed?
What I understood LTAC to be recommending is that we meet with more than Mount Shasta Engineering, and I don't know about the legality of that.
Well, right now, what you have, what you've done thus far is just continue this item. You've made no decision or direction on negotiations with consultants. You're keeping, it sounds like you're keeping the ad hoc in place. My recommendation is to do that, keep at the ad hoc, have, have the city manager and the ad hoc have further discussions with LTAC and bring this back to you.
And a determination about the process needs to be part of that report. Who all we include in the, in the negotiations, that, that kind of thing, correct?
Correct. Then, then your ad hoc committee should be in a better position to make a definitive recommendation to the council on how to go forward.
Okay, so what I've heard is, is that you will circulate the product that LTAC?
I will put, I have a copy of that. I will put that together with the memo to council, all council members, and you'll have that immediately. We will continue meetings with the ad hoc committee and LTAC and we'll try to bring this to a more concrete position with solid recommendation on how to go forward.
And I'd further request that there be something at every meeting in terms of an update, and we keep this moving.
Okay.
I object.
Object to having an update at every meeting?
Yes, because I think that we were going to address the library board of trustees in our protocol meeting. I think that we need to understand, better understand our role that we're playing as far as the direction and providing leadership for the library.
The next protocol meeting is between now and the next meeting.
Right.
And that will be on the agenda.
I think, I think that to just focus solely on a building expansion and not step back and really look at the overall services that the library provides our communities and look at how our, how our library is situated within our community and how we can best serve as a library board of trustees, that all needs to take, be taken a hard look at.
Well, again, that might be a future agenda item. It wouldn't be, from my perspective, part of the protocols because the city council protocols are how do we proceed as a council, not how do we proceed as a library board of trustees. So I think that it would be a separate agenda item.
It's in the mix.
No, how do we, how do we, how do we handle our meetings?
It's, it's what our, it is, it does have to do with our role as well. So we can touch on it at the protocols meeting because it has to do with role clarification. What is the protocol? How do we act as, as a, as a board of trustees? And then we can bring it for further discussion to a council agenda. It may, it may take us a while to work through that. It may, it may take us a while to work through that, and it's a perfectly appropriate subject, to which the public would be invited, as part of a protocol workshop. So, I'm gonna disagree with that. So, Barb...
I disagree on that, but we can perhaps discuss whether, at a further time, perhaps with the assistance of staff.
About the protocol agenda.
Right.
Okay. So, do we need a vote on whether or not you're going to provide an update at every meeting, about progress? You could just send out a mon, actually, what a better thing is, send out a memo, that just tells us what you have done. Okay, let's do that.
Yeah, I would like to see this come back next month. What I was hearing from LTC is, is that, or LTAC, is that perhaps, they would only need 30 days. So, perhaps, we can at least pencil in this matter for next month, depending on how things go.
Why don't we agree that we will issue a report, in a memo form, to the council, prior to council meetings, and then, if you have questions, you can ask of the staff during the staff discussion period.
Would you repeat that, Bruce? Sorry, I wasn't close enough, closely attending.
I was just agreeing with you, that we should, as this goes forward, we should send out information to the council in a memo form, of what has been accomplished, rather than taking it council time. But, if out of that memo, a council member has a specific question, they need clarification on, they can simply do that during the staff comment period.
Okay, and they can communicate with you at all times, and you can provide the clarification in the next update. And you, by the way, will be convening the ad hoc committee? You have the lead on, on the process here? Or, I mean, is that, is that how you see it?
Yes.
Okay. Since this has been a role clarification issue from day one, I'm...
Rest assured.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. I'd like to take a 10-minute recess, before we go to the fire department organization. Thank you very much for your kind attention. So, I was thanking you for your patience. What we have, that just occurred during the break, I'm told, is a request for reconsideration of the vote we just had, which will again postpone the agenda items for a few more minutes, until we finish this. So, Paul, would you please make your request?
Yeah, I request to change my vote, to item number two, on the City Council options, to a yes vote.
I'll make a motion, that the council approve option two.
Okay, and do we have a second for that? For the audience's purposes, option two reads, "To approve the amended contract, which eliminates the required lead evaluation and programming, the public outreach requirement, and reduces the architectural design task with Mount Shasta Engineering negotiated by the City Council Ad hoc Committee. The negotiated amount is down to $199,500." That's option two. I've just heard a motion to, I've heard a request for reconsideration of that vote, from a member of the majority. I've heard a motion that we approve that vote, that we approve option number two. Is there a second to that? Paul?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second for option number two, which is a change from the previous decision. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Nay.
Okay, so we now have a three-two vote, in favor of option number two. My direction to staff would be to contact all the players as soon as possible, to notify them of the difference. Any other direction to staff?
And who's the, who's the lead staff person?
And you will designate a project manager for this?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you for your patience. Those of you who were waiting on additional agenda items here, we're now ready for agenda item number nine and 10 combined. So, this one is discussion and possible action on fire department staffing. Before we hear your report, Matt, what I want to do is lay out a potential process. So, this is a fairly complicated issue that we have in front of us, and so I, I've spent some time thinking about a process that might work. So, I'm going to explain, I'm going to explain the way I see our discussion process tonight, and then we'll dive in, okay? So, the first point, I'm, I first would like to appoint an ad hoc committee, which is with staff recommendation. And I want to do that first, because I want those votes to take notes. I want those folks who are appointed, to take notes of the discussion that comes, that ensues tonight. Because, we're going to ask council members to weigh in on the alternatives to be considered by the ad hoc. So, so I'm going to, what I want to do is appoint the ad hoc first. And the scope that I see, at this point, and you'll have an opportunity to comment on this, is I would say, that with Muriel and fire department staff, the ad hoc committee would develop packaged alternatives, and I'll, and I'll explain that in a minute, with the costs and payment options. The reason is, I thought about, how are we going to structure alternatives? You know, you have, in the report, you have chief salaries, you have pay equity, you have volunteers, you have different categories. What I'm suggesting for a stack, by a stacked alternative, is that in each alternative, you address what you want to do with chief salary, pay equity, volunteers, whatever, and you come out with a bottom line cost, and payment options for that. So, so the scope would be to develop packaged alternatives with the costs and payment options, and then come back with a staff report, that would incorporate the ad hoc recommendations. Would be, hopefully, one report that would incorporate both, for council deliberation. That's how I would describe the scope of the project we would be handing to the ad hoc committee, to work with staff on. Then, so then, the next thing I'm proposing we talk about, is your input, Muriel, about the salary study option. We had earlier said we wanted to consider doing a salary study for fire, police, and public works. It's been a number of years, you can, you can fill us in all that. I want to know if, and/or how, those should be mixed together during this process, that we're looking at for fire department salary, for compensation. So, we'll just hear from you, if we can, what you're thinking currently is about that salary study, so we can decide whether, or if, to incorporate that in this deliberation. Next, is then council discussion. I'd like for us to each to have an opportunity to share with staff and ad hoc, any thoughts we have about how those, what we'd like to have considered in those alternatives. What, and any, and we can also do questions for clarification. So, we've got an ad hoc committee, we will have an ad hoc committee set up to do this. I don't, what I'm hoping is that tonight, you can say to them, as you're considering alternatives, think about this, that you, and you will have reviewed what was in the package. Think about organizing them this way. Think about being sure to mention this and that. Think about, we don't need to think about stipends for volunteers, I just throw that out as an example. Things that you'd like that committee to consider, coming back within the alternatives. And of course, we'll have our chance for questions for clarification. So, that's my proposal for our discussion tonight, to sort of manage it a bit. What I'd like, at this point, is a, is a motion to appoint an ad hoc, to produce these alternatives, and then we'll go through all of the information.
I'll move that we form an ad hoc committee to formulate packages for fire, fire department salaries.
Compensation, yes, okay.
Compensation.
So, there's a motion to appoint an ad hoc, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you for going with me on this.
I have a request.
Yes.
I have a request that you include a district board member to your ad hoc committee.
Ah, you know, I just assumed, I'm sorry. Rick, are you in there? I, I assumed that fire department leadership would include both, but that's a very good clarification.
We will.
Yeah.
It will be at least one person from the district.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Muriel. Okay, so, I'd like to proceed now with appointing those two ad hoc members from the council, and I'd like to appoint Paul and Barbara, if you would agree to do that, working together with the, with the caveats we just talked about. So, you can decline. Can decline.
I'll accept that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. It'll be an interesting investigation. Thank you. Okay, so now, let's, let's go to your staff report. Did you want to introduce it, Bruce?
Well, this is a follow-up to the previous discussions we've had, to the fire department and the council. It's part of our intent to bring to the council the concerns the fire department is facing in its day-to-day staffing, and the challenges it faces in providing adequate emergency services for the community. And we're not expecting any absolute decision tonight. This is part of an ongoing process of education, exploring options, leading to a conclusion at a later date. The staff's put a lot of work into this, and I, I think the appointment of the ad hoc committee, they have a lot of work ahead of them, and listening with staff, as put together tonight, will be very helpful with that.
Well said. Thank you. Matt?
Thank you, madam mayor, members of the council. So, at the February 12 council meeting, council requested additional information on several items. Currently, full-time fire personnel, with the exception of the two chiefs, are paid on an hourly basis, work four 10-hour shifts per week. The per-hour wages range from 1607 to 2324. Overtime is established about 20 hours for a four-week period, and is paid at time and a half. The chiefs work a schedule of 40 hours a week, with no additional compensation, given beyond their regular work. Volunteers are compensated $10 per call, for responding to any incident types besides medical aid, which makes up most of the calls in the fire service period. The total salary for the five paid employees for 2016-17 fiscal year was 262, 205, and that's not including benefits, so you can add about 40% to that, correct? At least that, 40 to 50%. So, we paid out $10,320 during the 2016-17 fiscal year for volunteers. Did you, did council want to wait for the train to go by, or are you okay?
I can, I can hear. Are we okay, folks? Okay, thank you for asking, chief.
So, per-hour pay and salaries within the fire department, among the lowest in the city. Public Works hourly wages, wages range from 1805 to 2665. The police department is 2183 to 3118. Again, the nature of the fire service means personnel are exposed to many different types of public safety incidents. Per-hour paid and salary of the fire, fire personnel should reflect other public safety entities. It brought into alignment with the police department, the cost per year is approximately $321,755, not including overtime or benefits. So, again, you can add close to 50% to that, so we're talking a little over $600,000. So, we're jumping up fairly well. So, again, the fire chiefs' hours and pay, currently, they earn a salary and receive no additional compensation, although they do work often, or often work many hours outside their regular shift. Again, FLSA, the Fair Labor Standard Act, allows exempt employees to be compensated for some work, work outside of their regular schedule. Staff is suggesting chiefs be compensated straight time for hours worked outside their regular 40-hour schedule. The standby time, right now, the battalion chief, the two paid captains are working four-day shifts. If they do get called out for overtime, it's time and a half, but they are not compensated for any standby time. This is just a word of mouth. It's never been written in stone that they have to be on standby. It's one of the things that we did do, when we hired them, that was just on word, that they are on standby on their shifts. Typically, throughout the departments, and other departments within the city, it's about $100 a week per employee for standby, other than the two chiefs. This is approximately $15,600, $600 per year. The stipend, which we already have in place, for hiring one of our volunteers, which was done in 2005-ish, I believe, was about $100 for a 24-hour period. So, we could ask one of the volunteers to come in and cover, if both paid employees were gone at the time. We would like to request that practice continue, and increase that to $200 for the 24-hour shift, which would be a savings of about $400 for the 24-hour period, if we did have to pay overtime. Again, we have done that in the past, it's already in an MOU through the city. We would just like to raise that up. The volunteer pay, we're still actively seeking, we're about 17 or 18 volunteers at this point. We would like to see the increase of not paying them just for any emergencies outside of a medical aid. We would like to pay them for all calls, which would be approximately one to three volunteers responding to each call, which would be $9,800 to $24,900 per year, depending on how many volunteers do show up to any given call. So, again, other requests and information that council wanted us to bring forward, was the cost to develop a sleeper program, unknown, and it's unfeasible at this time, because there's no housing available. The cost factors associated with the housing at the district station isn't known at this time. We are working on that, but that's not going to be something that happens overnight, it's going to be a couple-year project. Again, the tax revenue, which we have met multiple times with Muriel over this issue, a safer grant, is doing a public safety tax, rather than a partial tax increase. a safer grant, is doing a public safety tax rather than a partial tax increase. There's more money that could be allocated towards public safety with the tax increase. ISO is a grading standard for the fire departments. It can affect the homeowner's insurance. Fire departments are graded from zero, or, excuse me, 1 to 10. The lower the number, the better. The city of Mount Shasta is currently classified as a 3. For a combination department, that is really good. Our recent report is attached. I believe we are going to get another grading within the next few months. Again, I just wanted to say that, you know, to the ad hoc committee we wanted appointed, which we appreciate from the council, we wanted to come back with an MOU as soon as we can. I definitely want to keep the employees we have. They're very dedicated, and there's some things that I think that we can resolve very quickly. That's going to be the least amount to the bank for the buck, if you will. We're willing to work with anything we can. We don't want to break the city by any means. We just want something that's fair, so we can keep our employees here and have a good wage, and they can live here. So, be more than happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. It was a really great next installment. Thank you for those of you who worked on it. Appreciate it. So, questions of our fire chief?
I don't know if it's for the fire chief, but I'm wondering, you know, we do the, we just had a salary increase. We just voted for the 2.5%, 2%, 2.5% for the fire department, right? So, how does this situate us with all the other departments? If we're, now that we just had, we voted a salary increase of 2%, now we're revisiting this shortly thereafter. How does that work with across the board?
The 2% salary increase was for everyone.
Yeah.
The fire department included. So, it does, it really doesn't, it doesn't change the disparity between, for instance, the fire department and the police department, just as a for instance.
I have a very specific question that I'll ask. You very helpfully assigned a dollar range, a cost, excuse me, cost estimate to each of these different topics, except for the fire chief hours and pay. You recommend that anything paid, anything over 40-hour shift just be paid at straight time, as opposed to overtime, which could be an option, but do you have, you know, there's no feel here for the number of hours the chiefs spend in, beyond their 40 hours. Is there a thinking you can assign?
Yeah, it should be in your packet. It's a spreadsheet that's in one of the back pages of your packet.
Can you, can you find it?
I don't know the page number. It's right before the ISO classification study.
Okay. I don't need to know it now, but if it's in there.
It's in there, yeah.
Okay.
And we can definitely put that in. But it's the same amount of hours typically that the captains or the battalion chief works.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so it's same overtime ways.
Right.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Chief, it was my understanding that we started out on this path because of the difficulty in attracting volunteers, or the perceived difficulty of attracting volunteers. And so, we were to look at how can we attract and maintain fire volunteers. Am I correct on that?
For this report, or?
Well, I thought that's how we got started on this process. It seems to me that we're now talking about something different than attracting volunteers.
I don't believe so.
Okay, so, the fire chief compensation, to me, is different than how do we attract and maintain fire volunteers. Likewise, likewise, the salary for paid fire department employees, to me, is a different subject than how do we attract and retain fire volunteers. So, I frankly would like to see us stay on that attract and maintain and retain fire volunteers. You've indicated you, that because no housing is available, the sleeper program is something we shouldn't consider anymore.
So, this is time for questions? Is this?
But how did you come to the, how did you come to the conclusion? And what research have you done to say the sleeper program is not to be considered?
We don't have a place to house them. That's a huge issue.
And so, what I would request is that the ad hoc committee make note of the concern about the sleeper program. You know, we're not going to resolve all of this tonight, correct? So, so it's, we're walking a fine line here of how much we get into tonight in depth, and how much we ask the ad hoc committee to look at when they're stacking the alternatives up.
I'm willing to save my questions for later. That's what you're asking me to do.
I'm just asking each of us to think about, to phrase your suggestions. Let's see, what am I asking? I'm asking right now for questions for clarification of staff on their report. Right.
I thought that I was doing that and asking what research the chief made in terms of housing alternatives, housing availability. Whether that be stick housing, whether that be trailer, trailers, plural, whatever else.
We have done that, and it's been, it has been brought to council numerous times of renting a house, of having a, hire somebody to take care of the house. We didn't have the funds for that. We don't, they're not at the station. We've tried to have people at the station, and what the last report was, was the salary survey and to hire people because of the lack of volunteers. That's the issue. So, I'm trying to keep the people we have working here that, to make a livable wage. That's what I'm trying to get at. And volunteers are supplemental, but the issue is, we can't get volunteers to stay.
Okay, I'll bring it up in terms of the subcommittee then.
Okay, other questions for Matt about his report?
So, the issues addressed in your report, you think they are adequately addressing retaining the current workers that you have?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Well, for me, it was pretty thoroughly reported, so I haven't got any specific questions other than, so if there are no more questions to the chief.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, chief, do you, do you think there, maybe I missed this, is there any funds that can, you know, differ than the ones we currently have coming in? I'm under the impression that there was a merger between the county fire district and the city a few years back. So, funding comes in from there, and then, of course, the city has, is there any supplemental funding that can help offset the extra costs?
Yes.
Okay, so, how much of a percentage is it? 50%?
We've been talking with Muriel. We've had numerous meetings on this exact subject.
All right, so, Muriel, do you think that on a percentage basis of the increase, how much would be offset? 10, 20, 30%? All of it?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that yet. I think we have a great deal of ad hoc committee stuff to do with some projections of what those changes for each one of them, each one of the changes are. I've run those numbers already, so I have them prepared for the ad hoc committee at that time. I think the bigger question is where the revenue's going to come to cover that. That said, I think it's an important move to take a look at all of these issues, along with the, and if you'd like me to talk about the salary survey, at this point, I will.
I'm certainly ready to switch to that, unless you have more specific questions of the report that was given us.
So, what I've done so far is I've gotten a listserv from California cities, which list four different firms that do salary surveys, and then we also have the firm that did our last one, which was back in, I want to say, 2002 or '03. Basically, a classification study costs between $750 to $1,000 per classification. We have 25 classifications. So, you're looking at it, for a classification salary survey, you're looking at it, and this is, you're looking at $19,000 to $25,000 to do the survey. I think that the ad hoc committee would be remiss if they didn't take into consideration the other folks within the city, the police department, the dispatchers, the public works. Just, one of the things with the fire department, I think that needs to be brought out, is that just a few years ago, all we had was a chief and an assistant chief. So, when we brought on the additional folks and made the department much more, I wanted to say beefy, but that's not the right term. Robust, thank you. At that point, the amounts that we were paying them then was what we could afford at the time. But when you look at the disparity between what a fire, a regular firefighter makes and what, say, a regular police officer makes, which I would consider a similar type of work, and I think it's scored similarly in a classification study, then there's definitely, there's room for improvement for the fire department, certainly. So, the ad hoc committee, I think, is a great move in order to get those things together, to do the projections of cost, to see where we can get perhaps some more funding from the district, to see what the district can provide for that. I think that definitely doing a classification study, I know that the $19,000 to $25,000 is a lot of money, but I think it's going to be money well spent to finally come to the conclusion where every, we have those classifications all done, and we have an idea of what the salary ranges should be, and that there isn't this wide range in disparity, you know, between people like the firefighters and police officers, just as an example. I think that's all I had at this point, unless you have additional questions.
Questions from Muriel. Thank you, Muriel. I have one. So, when we were working with the police department salaries, you provided this gorgeous matrix of a comparison of work from the city of Weed, Siskiyou County, Wyrika, and then us. And I'm just wondering if doing an equivalent, putting it on your back to do an, or someone's, to do an equivalent comparison between nearby cities would be sufficient?
You're not going to be able to do that with the fire department, because we, most of the fire departments are volunteer, for the most part. Is that correct, Matt? Or they're being supplemented by CalFire. In other words, the city's contracting with CalFire to provide some of their stuff. Is that correct? Am I saying that correctly?
Correct, and what we did is went through comparable-sized cities, call volume, that's, we have that information, so we can put it together for you.
Yeah, so the data that they have isn't just a willy-nilly, you know, throw a dart at a dartboard to come up with a wage. They actually have done some work to, and done some comparisons with other types of cities, with, like you said, with the call volume and some of those other kinds of things. Again, it'll be great for the ad hoc committee to get down to the nitty-gritty and see those comparisons and to see those, that analysis. One of the things that I've done, just in developing the budget so far this year, is I've taken into consideration the call-out pay for fire, just to get an idea of if nothing else were to happen, that they would have a call-out-type pay comparable to what public works has at this point. You have to also remember that the fire department is not a part of the union, so they're not able to come and negotiate the types of things that you see the police department and the public works department do. So, in order to be equitable, I'm just looking at the different, all those different kinds of things, determining what the costs of those different things are, to see if it's comparable to some of the other types of duties that other folks, whether in public works, dispatch, police department, just to see if those kinds of things, in the, for fairness, just to see where we wind up.
So, you're recommending, if I'm understanding you, that the ad hoc committee consider whether or not it would be advisable, that they would recommend a city council to direct staff to do the salary study, that it be part of the ad hoc consideration?
I would, I would actually like to actually even bypass that and go right to saying, I would like the city council to give direction to do the salary, salary and classification study.
Tonight?
And to do, well, what I would do is a request for proposal to the five firms that I've discovered through the listserv, as well as the, I spoke with the company that did our salary and classification study all those years ago as well, and they're all interested, of course, in providing a bid.
There is another fundamental issue that council needs to decide, and hopefully not have decided for us, and that is that historically, in Mount Shasta, with all our prior city managers, city administrators, we have taken the position that the fire department is and should be made up of volunteers. It's gotten eroded somewhat through the diligent efforts of our chief, who, for years, has said he would like to have a paid fire department.
That is not true. Please, through the chair. This is way off a subject, and this is bashing on your fire chief, okay? I am not trying to get a paid department. What I am trying to do is come to the council with a concern for this whole community to have a fire department. If that's not what the council wants, that's fine. If they want to leave a status quo, that's fine. At this point, I don't care. It's up to the council to make that decision, but I, this is not right.
Okay, I...
All right, I'll say, from my experience, understanding, and perspective, and we can have a difference of opinion, I appreciate your speaking about the difference of opinion. So, that is, I think, a fundamental question that council needs to ask.
It could be an alternative. An alternative could speak to heavy dependence on volunteers. It could be, an alternative could be structured around that, and I'd recommend it. As far as your point about this started out as a conversation about volunteers, I do recall that. It is the staff's prerogative to put things on an agenda as they see fit, and what I understand is that this, these are not separate issues in their mind, and to a large extent, that makes sense to me. that makes sense to me. So regardless of what the initial impetus was, it has evolved a bit in my understanding, and what we have before us is a more comprehensive look at what it would take to have a viable fire department.
Through the chair, if I may. Historically, Tim is right in the view that we've always been a volunteer fire department. However, in my opinion, it's time to go further than that. We're not able to have volunteers, we're not able to have the type of staffing I think that is necessary for our community. I think that with some careful planning through the ad hoc committee and through gradual increases and steps through time, I think that we definitely could have a paid fire department, and I think it's far time that we do that, just my opinion.
Through the chair. Something that hasn't been mentioned is, you know, you participate in the workshops about hazard mitigation, and you know the issues that we have coming up. We haven't been hit with a wildfire in a while, you know, and it does become a huge concern for city staff as well as residents when we send our firefighters out to go make money in other counties to bring it back. That helps us supplement some of our budget, and, you know, for the fire department. But as we continue this trend of, you know, wildfire hazards, we see an increase in the fire code standards, one of the things you have to think about is the indirect impacts to your housing market. As you, you know, as you rely on volunteers more and more, which is fine, you can do that, but your insurance takes a hit because of that, when you do not provide adequate service, adequate equipment for that. So even though it is directly associated with budget, it's directly associated with how the city wants to go forward, you need to also, and I would caution the ad hoc this when they go forward as well, you need to keep in mind the indirect factors. So you are putting yourself at higher risk for hazards, you're putting your housing market at risk for higher insurance rates, or no insurance at all. So, you know, those are just some to cover today, to think about when we go forward, to make sure you're really thinking about the big picture with this. You know, and it goes to say, it's the same thing for any safety department. You need to make sure there's adequate hospitals, you need to make sure there's adequate police, because those things do influence your housing market prices, and it influences your housing insurance.
And I would ask that the subcommittee look at the historic ISO readings of Mount Shasta, because we have improved the ISO readings time and time again with a volunteer or mostly volunteer department. And we, as a city council, have, I think, almost never refused in the recent past, may I finish?
Yes.
Equipment requests and material requests that have come from the chief and from the fire department. So I think it would be good to look at the historic ISO ratings, maybe for the past 20 or 30 years.
Yes, I would love to bring that forward because it's been changed once, and it was when the departments got together because of the equipment that we purchased, not staffing, that we're still low on that, and it's changed once in the last 25 years. So it hasn't changed four or five times. The council's been very supportive, but what we have to remember here, the police department at one point was all volunteer with a chief. What happened to that? We had to move forward and have a paid police department because of the restrictions that post in the state of California put on police departments. That's the same thing that's happening with the fire service, exact same thing. The volunteers are going to go away. One of these days, there will not be anymore. I would love to supplement this fire department with 50 volunteers, but I can put 50 volunteers on the books tonight. They're not going to be trained, they're going to show up to your house and not know what to do. There's restrictions on driving, there's restrictions on medical, there's restrictions on everything. They can't do it. They have to be trained before they can even leave the station. That's the issue. It's the same thing what happened to the police department. Unfortunately, it's just coming about now. The council at that point had to make a decision about the police department years back. So it's the same difference.
It's my understanding that training hours have like quadrupled in the last 10 years for volunteers. Some of them have to put in at least 100 hours a year to maintain their certification as a volunteer fire department, fireman, and, I mean, that's one thing I think we should look at, too, is that.
I do have another question I see in my notes, and thank you for taking notes, both of you, of the discussion, I appreciate it. Under volunteer pay, you mentioned a range depending on how many respond, between 98 and 24,000. Can we not limit the number of volunteers who respond?
Absolutely. We can say on a medical way that we're going to pay the two people that are on the piece of equipment, and we did do that through the district, I believe, five, six years ago, I don't remember what it was, but they limited, you know, to two people. That's all that was going to get paid. Or we had a schedule that somebody had the squad, or, you know, they were going to respond to the rescue, and those are the people that got paid for the calls. So we can't limit it.
So you could, you could say, consistent with all the alternatives, because we're trying to make this as most cost-effective as possible.
Absolutely.
You could say, we will limit the number of responding volunteers to two, or whatever that is.
That are going to be paid.
And assign a cost to that.
Correct.
And that could be consistent across all alternatives, or, you know.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah. Through the chair. I can see, or foresee, a matrix of particular alternatives with different types of, similar to what I did for the police department, that will clearly see, you'll be able to clearly look at and see where those differences lie, and see what the cost is with whatever particular alternative it is.
And so, but just in, for clarification, I'm trying to picture this, what I'm imagining is that what we will be presented with is at least two, if not three, alternatives that consist of the, of a combination, the best combination of pay equality, fire chief, standby, volunteers, stipends, you know, that each alternative will have a different balance, a different blend of each of those things, so that you could say, we could have a fire, we could have an operation that was this way, because this is all we can afford with existing budget or something, and then you would put the best combination of all those things together. You could have another alternative, for instance, that says, well, if we are able to get X amount of dollars of grant money, then, you know, or something, some dependable source, then we could put together a department that looked like this, and it would include all these different factors. Or if we went the max, then it would look like this, and we'd have to, we could possibly levy taxes, or, you know, whatever. But, but does that make sense to you, that we, that there'd be a bottom-line cost associated with each of those alternatives? Okay.
I would like to continue with my proposals or requests to the subcommittee. Thank you. So I would like the subcommittee to further investigate housing alternatives, sleeper program, because with that, if we have housing available, we can get fire cadets as volunteers, and that would be an alternative to perhaps, well, that may be a less expensive alternative, depending upon circumstances. Also, I'd like the subcommittee to look at alternatives to attract and retain volunteers, which could include scholarships, could include other financial and non-financial incentives. I'd like the subcommittee to also, in terms of there was a suggestion to do a survey, one of the concerns I have is to also include a community wage or income survey. I've heard, heard the chief earlier today talk about living wages for the volunteers or for the employees. I want to make sure that our public pay doesn't outstrip the wages or income that community members receive, because they're the ones who are paying us, and I don't want to get in a situation, have us get in a situation where there is a disconnect between what public employees get paid and what the private sector gets paid. So I think a community wage income survey would be warranted.
Can I have a comment here? I mean, I think it's, I think it's typical that the benefits for public, public employees are higher.
No.
No? No? Okay.
You have to, you have to look at CDF, CalFire, or whatever they're called now. I mean, they make a lot of money compared to city.
Can I make one comment real quick? So we're, we're working on a SAFRA grant right now.
What's SAFRA?
I'm sorry?
You said, SAFRA?
SAFRA grant.
Okay.
To actually hire employees that's paid through the state. It's a certain portion that we would have to come up with, which we've talked with Muriel, that we think we can do it out of some funds through the fire department. Of course, if we get this, it'll come back to council. We're working hard to get that, it'd be two paid employees. The exception to that rule is, once we go out and we look at CalFire, that a starting firefighter's making $90,000 a year, and we're going to pay $1,250 an hour for a starting firefighter, we're going to have a big, that's a big gap.
What period of time is the 90,000?
90,000 is for five months, and that's being gone for five months, and this is a bad thing to say if you have a good fire season, which is a bad fire season. If the person is working 24 hours a day, seven days a week away from home. So that's the comparison that we cannot keep up with, and we realize that. The guys that are here, was what I was trying to stress, the people that we have work really hard, they're very dedicated, and I want to keep them here. I don't want to be a training ground, I want to keep our employees happy and keep them here. That's my whole point to this.
So I think it would be helpful, thank you, for the ad hoc committee to get very clear about the objectives. What are you shooting for? What are you, what are you trying for? And then each alternative could emphasize a different blend of the objectives, you know? This would be better to meet that objective, this alternative would better meet that objective. So get very clear about the objectives of the study.
So the $90,000 is for six months, you said?
Five months.
Five months.
Typically, a five-month fire season.
But it's like a full-time, give us your life for five months, 100%?
Exactly. And then if you do not have a good fire season, you don't go out of county, you could be looking at $15,000.
Oh.
So it's a, it's a toss-up. You don't know.
So the $15,000 is sort of like a standby?
That's just sleeping, working three days a week, you're getting paid around the clock. So a firefighter's working three days, having four days off.
Any other suggestions for our ad hoc committee in terms of the alternatives? I was going to recommend, I am going to recommend that we, well, I was going to say, forget about the sleeper program. It's the complete opposite of what you had said, and I'm not sure I could justify it. So I'm going to rescind. I had some recommendations about things to minimize or drop out, because it didn't seem to me, in my infinite wisdom, that it was that critical, but I'm going to just forget about it and leave it up to the ad hocs, so, and the staff together. Okay. Any other recommendations you'd like the committee, the group, to consider? Any thoughts about timeframes here? Will there be, is anybody up here have a sense that if we don't have this, when, you know, do you have any sense about timing here? Because often, when we set up an ad hoc, we have an end date in mind because the scope is pretty narrow. So what we're looking at, what we're looking at here is this committee coming back to council with some alternatives, that we would deliberate over those alternatives, we would decide which alternative we were going to go with, and that then would be translated, I'm understanding, into an MOU, or some similar kind of device that represents the agreement we're making.
I think in fairness, to the subcommittee and the folks that are going to be working on this, I think they're going to need at least 90 days and possibly longer.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. What I, what I'm hoping to do here is not, is to surface any expectations any of us have here for any quick turnaround, and then talk about that, because it's not likely to have a quick turnaround, given staff time, et cetera, et cetera. So are we comfortable with leaving it fairly open, trusting that you'll be on it?
Can we start soon?
Okay.
And you're going to call again? You're going to call?
Okay, so thank you very much. I appreciate all the work that's gone into it and the comments from everyone, and thank you, ad hoc and staff, for putting some more energy into it.
Thank you. No, we did that. Did you guys want any public comment?
Oh, oh my gosh. Oh my gosh. I didn't take any public comment. I am so sorry. Juliana, I just spaced it, forgive me.
Are you going to ask right now?
Ah, yes. If there are those of you in the audience who would like to offer a public comment, please do so. I'm so sorry. Yep. They have to come up to the mic, please.
Bob Ashworth, I'm the chairman of the board for the fire district, and at some day, we will be, come involved, because we are also paying the same wages, and we do not get the funding that the city does. And so I would like to truly be involved as soon as possible.
You would like this to what?
I would like to be involved as soon as possible when it comes to funding, because I work with our chief for the district, and figure our funding and our concepts of how we're going to pay for what we have, and our, our method of funding is not consistent with how the city is able to tax, and also receive Proposition 172 funding. And so, the sooner we become involved, the better for us, I would believe. Totally up to you.
That's, that's an excellent point. I'm so happy that you brought that up. So you, do you act as an, forgive me for wanting to understand the role better, do you act as like an, you direct the fire, the chief, and you, and you report your recommendations to the board of supervisors, who then make decisions about funding?
No.
No? Okay, help me.
We do our own funding. It will be, this past year, for example, myself and the chief sat down and penciled it out. There's only so much funding that we are going to get with... It will be, this past year, for example, myself and the chief sat down and penciled it out. There's only so much funding that we are going to get with an additional funding for when our teams go out on strike teams, for example. We will send out equipment. Well, then, our revenue will increase, but then our, the cost for our, the services that we have to pay for to our firefighters, that goes up. And so it, it balances generally most of the time. The city also sends out their strike teams, and it just, it's a fine way to do it. And you all, you folks do benefit on the money-wise also on that, when your strike teams go out. But the, the point being is you can't count on that. It's been very beneficial to our district to get us back in the black, and then we're doing reasonably well with it. But we do not have the same access to taxes that you folks do.
Thank you so much. This is a very good point you're making. Can, can we assume that you and Chief Joyce would work together to be, have your input be part of the process we've just outlined?
Would love to.
Did you say yes? Yes?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. Yes.
I didn't want to speak for it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And like I said, the sooner our involvement in this ad hoc committee begins, the better off we would be as a district, because like I say, we are limited in our funding, and there's not going, I doubt that we could support a tax raise in the county area. The last one they tried went down. I don't see anything different now, or in the future. Do you, Rick?
Okay. Okay. Thank you. So, so we'll just direct staff to include you from the get-go. Of course, you were married at the hip, right? So yes, but it's a very good reminder. Thank you, sir. Lots of complexity. Thank you for listening to the whole conversation. And Juliana for reminding me about public comment. Okay. Okay. So let's move on now to item number 11, the first reading of ordinance number, what are we at, 22?
Ordinance two.
Oh, it's an ordinance. Yes, two.
It doesn't have a number at this point.
Right. I'm just curious.
And I will, I'm going to move to continue items 11 and 12 until council members can have a marked-up copy of, of the amendments to each of these ordinances. Reading the discussion, I think the efforts are laudable, but I'd like to know what the changes are before I take a vote. And without seeing marked-up changes, I can't do that.
Well, I'll ask each of us to weigh in. I think that's a good point. My question, and we could certainly say, certainly from now on out, we could ask for that, I think. It's reasonable to ask that we see changes tracked in ordinances put before us. My question to you, Juliana or Bruce, is what would be the consequences of delaying this until the 23rd meeting, with the next staff report having tracked changes in it?
Special events, I don't think is really going to matter, because we have most of those in already this year, and we probably wouldn't apply the changes, the proposed changes, if they're approved, probably not until after the event season. As far as the graphic ordinance, the sign ordinance amendments, I've got quite a few businesses waiting to get signs, because they're waiting for the changes. But you know what? If you want to put them off, I'm not going to argue with you, because I would like to go home tonight.
So it would be a two-week, a two-week delay, in essence. How are the rest of you sitting with that?
I would like to make a request really quick, though. You know, it's, we try and do our best as city staff members to meet the needs of our committees and city council, and typically, most of our committees are very cognizant of our time. Like I said, you heard my staff report earlier today about what's going on. In the future, if I could get requests more than a day in advance, that would be really, really nice to have. That would include questions that you guys typically ask, so I'm prepared to address them. Barbara does a really great job of having her questions ahead of time, so I can address them in staff reports. But as far as, you know, requests and things like that, if I could please get them more than a day in advance, that would be really nice, because I can, I can usually do that, but I didn't have a chance this time to address that concern, because it was just too late. So if I could please request that.
You know, I, I think we could, we could put that in our protocols, actually. You know, it's, it's a courteous thing to do, to do our best to get, generally, if we're able to get our comments and questions to staff in time to have them think about it and make any changes to improve the staff report. Sometimes it's not possible, but I think we can certainly strive for it. So.
We have a motion on the.
We do. Well, we.
There was a motion.
It was a motion. Is there a second, then, to continue these two ordinances? We have a public comment from Mr. Kennedy. Let's see. Yes, so John, come on up, please. Thank you for waving.
John Kennedy, Mount Shasta. I talked to Juliana a little bit about the sign ordinance, and there's some items in here that I'm concerned with, that I can't do at a meeting in three minutes, you know, and, but she recommended that somehow I talk to you, and I don't know, the best way to do that is to find one or two of you that I could talk to about the issues that I have. Or how do I go about that?
You know why you can email the citizens?
Yeah.
You can submit a letter through Kathy Wilson, and she can give it to each of us. And we can all consider it. We just can't talk about it together and deliberate around it, except with one other person. That would be very helpful.
Okay. I'll try, I'll try to draft that up. I didn't have enough time tonight, you know, to get anything ready for you, and so having the meeting delayed like that would actually work. And I'll try to get it in the next week, if you don't mind me emailing it to you, or I can get it, give it to Kathy's.
Bring it to us.
Okay. And sometimes I, I'll try to do it on the computer. I don't really talk that well, but I don't write, I even write worse. So, anyway.
Okay. And Kathy, when would you need that in order to get it into the staff packet?
It's already in the packet by the community.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks very much.
Okay.
Thank you for your understanding as well. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to continue these items.
We have no second at this point.
Oh, we don't have a second.
There's a motion waiting for a second.
Second.
I think I'm tired. We have a second now. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. I believe then we are through with that part of the agenda. What about reports on attendance at outside meetings?
So, on behalf of Paul and myself, we discussed ad nauseam the situation with the library ad hoc meetings. I've also been having, attending meetings with respect to rec. district renovations and expansions and improvements, and ways of financing those items, and that goes on. Hopefully, we'll have something to go to the public and something to go to the county by July, so they'll be on the ballot in November. More details later.
Tim?
Barbara Wagner, city manager, and I met with representatives of Weed and Dunsmere in terms of broadband issue. That was last Friday. We came up with a list of to-dos that we will hopefully be accomplishing the next one week, two weeks, and beyond, with the, with the goal of having CTC make its final presentation to the three cities in the next three to four weeks, depending upon CTC schedule and the city's schedules. We, we have another meeting that we have set for 9:00 a.m. tomorrow morning, for the representatives of the three cities to meet with CAL OR in the conference room above the police station, to see what sort of collaboration, if any, we can make with CAL OR for our mutual benefit. And the intent is that we would then also meet separately with Snowcrest, with Hunter Communications, with Northland Cable, to see if there's some way of working for our mutual benefit, for the benefit of, of the profit-making company, and for the benefit of our community, our constituents.
Thank you. Barbara?
I attended the ACT meeting, more as a citizen, to address, offer some public comment, and then left. I went to the Board of Supervisors meeting, and they talked about the declaration of drought. They're worried about Tully Lake not being able to plant this season, and the possible loss of 1,400 jobs and hundreds of millions of dollars of income as a result of, farmers are on hold right now to see whether the water is going to come to the region or not, and whether they're going to be able to plant. And we also could lose the reserve, the birds' reserve. So they're, talked about, let's see, there was something else here, too. They're going to meet with the State Board on April 18th at 8:00 a.m. at the County Environmental Health Department to discuss accept it, receiving facility approval for the city of Montague. So they want to go back to using Montague. They want, they don't want to continue to export their sewage. They want to go back to using the ponds in Montague if possible, and so they're going to talk to the Water Board about that. And Kathy Mortar and I, city manager, went to the USDA meeting with Vaughn?
Kim Van.
Kim Van. She talked about all sorts of different funding opportunities, including broad born, broadband. She was a, it was a good meeting. And I went to the Boys and Girls Club with you. There was an open house today, so we got the tour. I got the tour. Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you. The, the meeting that has been mentioned a couple times with Kim Van was, she is president's appointee to the U.S. Department of Agriculture, representing the state of California. And we talked about rural development, and they presented bottom-line figures. There were two meetings. There was one in the morning, and then there was the later one in the afternoon. The one that Barbara's talking about had invited communities from throughout Siskiyou County to come to a sort of a roundtable discussion about opportunities all the communities are looking for, for funding, that might come through the rural development funding sources. And the, our USDA local rep was at that meeting, as was the department, the director of the Water Department under rural, under USDA in California. He was there. And as, as Bruce went over before, they, they showed us the, the loans and grants from USDA and the state of California for our wastewater treatment plant, and she signed the letter in our presence, you know, that awarded us that money from USDA. It was a good brainstorming, I think, and she is, she is definitely one who's, who's well-connected, and she was a former Calusa County supervisor, and is very familiar with rural issues, and has pledged to do her best while we have this current president and, and the allocation to rural communities of approximately $50 million dedicated just to rural communities in California, to do her best to have it, have us considered in that allocation. Very promising. I attended a Trail Town communications subteam meeting. We're looking at possibly producing a handout map and flyer for a brochure for day hikes. We've talked some about the, the marketing that we'll be doing. We've talked about some of the, possibly doing a survey of attendees to our event that could be used beyond that to help measure the economic, the economic metrics associated with trail users, and also ask them what they do now use and what they could need to get, to get more engagement from the community. We've talked about these as possibilities. No decisions yet. I participated in the Pinwheel Garden planting with the Council, Community Services Council. That's the child prevention, child abuse, oh boy, the child abuse prevention organization. And, and I also attended their kickoff celebration later in the week. And the last thing I'd like to mention is, as a result of this communication work with the Trail Town, I was put in contact with a woman who has a, a very successful travel program. It's called Travels with Darley, and it's on, it's on the same caliber as Rick Steves. I mean, she does PBA, and there's PBA, there's all kinds of trips that she takes around the world, and she's interested in doing, she's never done one in California. She's very interested in the Pacific Crest Trail, and she's very interested in coming to Mount Shasta. So we're working on ways to, funding sources to help her get here, because she needs funding to bring her team here to do the programming. So it's an exciting opportunity. And that's it for me. Thank you. Okay. So last item, and then we'll adjourn for the evening, is any suggestions for future agenda items?
The two items we just tabled.
What?
The two items we just tabled.
Right.
Number 11 and 12.
Right. Mm-hmm. And something else we talked about earlier, and I didn't write it down.
The protocol is still on the 18?
Yeah. I, I'll manage to remember it at our pre-agenda meeting. I don't remember now. It was something that came up during tonight's discussion, about bringing it back. I don't remember.
The library. Oh, you finished that?
The library is.
No, it wasn't the library. I'm sorry.
I'm tired.
Can't remember. Okay. Okay. Any other thoughts about future agenda items? Okay. Thank you. We adjourned. Thank you very much.